All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the night to our May nineteen two thousand twenty city council meeting. Uh, for those of you joining in remotely, we appreciate that and appreciate your interest in your, in your community and your government. We appreciate the folks that are here. There are four council members here. We have another council member, Katie Smith, showing remotely. And Vice Mayor Brandon Howard will be here with the layout. Uh, so we will have, uh, we certainly have a forum. Before we go any further, we recessed our April twenty one two thousand twenty meeting. In case we needed to do anything, um, on an urgent basis, thank goodness we've been here. So I'd like to have a motion now to adjourn that meeting if we could.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor of adjourned the April meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll call the May nineteen meeting to order. Uh, and let me say to you that we are meeting tonight under the guidelines of the governor's executive order number sixteen. Which, uh, allows us to meet without, uh, public participation. But it, it does not mean that we meet privately. Folks can join in. This will be streaming live in real time, uh, now that we speak. And, um, we are also required to have, not required, but it is suggested that we have meetings. Uh, with less than ten people, we may do one or two over, but we are certainly in, uh, in compliance, I think, with, with the spirit. What the governor and the Senator has least control is expecting us to do. I will say also that I hope this is the last time we have to meet like this. Although the governor's order is in effect until May thirty first, it's outstanding, maybe it's the twenty ninth, I'm not sure. But, uh, if he does not extend it, that will expire. If he does extend it, then we'll continue to, to operate within those parameters. So, uh, I don't think I need to say anything else other than we welcome everybody that's, that's, uh, going us from wherever. And as I understand it, if there is a, a want to, you could probably be in North Dakota or somewhere else and check us out. Why the folks in North Dakota would want to do that, I can understand, perhaps. Uh, let me say this. I don't think I have completed folks tonight. It's okay. We'll, uh, you'll bow in, we'll have a word back. Our dear Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to gather here tonight with our friends and fellow city, uh, officials and employees. We thank you for the opportunity that you give us to live in a free country. We thank you for these folks who are willing to use their time. We're thankful for the opportunity that you give us to live in a small community where people love and care for each other. We ask that you bless this meeting, bless the participants, bless all the people in our community, and all the programs that keep us safe and humble. I ask that you go with us and forgive us all the sins. Amen. All right, um, you have a set of minutes there from the April twenty one meeting. I think it's been a while after you previously. So, uh, let me know when you're ready. If we need to make additions, deletions, modifications, or if you're ready to approve the minutes. Is there a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second motion, a second. Are there any discussion on these minutes? If I have to not, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
You opposed? Okay. Christie, you started holding the fat side of the room by yourself tonight.
I am, yeah.
The volume three get louder than you know, okay? Um, this is the part of the meeting where we normally have public business and of course, we don't have anybody from the public here tonight. Uh, but I did not receive anything from anybody wanting me to bring up tonight. Hopefully what you have on your mind is, uh, uh, yeah, we might do that here just a minute if you want to. Our planner water, he's a Wilson County planner, but we refer to him as the Water County Wilson County planner. He's here with his company, shared. I think maybe Howard, you had something you wanted to bring up? Maybe when they keep coming online, if you want, we can do that.
Uh, we, we, uh, had a meeting about, uh, a building that's, uh, didn't meet standards. And it was like three feet on one side and two and a half feet and they needed more than that. And what it's, it boils down to is, uh, what I want to run is it mentioned maybe in the, uh, in your report in the paper or something that people checked with the city before putting in a, a building. Uh, the people that sell the buildings, they come in and say, look, it's good. We'll say it right here. And it's creating problems for the one that's buying it and it's created caused problems for the city. So, uh, uh, I think we need to make some kind of attempt to straighten that out.
I'll be glad to do that. Tom, you want to address that?
I was just gonna mention at the board of zoning appeals over the past several months for the city of Watertown. We've had several instances come up whereby someone has built something and then after the fact, they find out that they should have gotten the permit. And not only should they have gotten the permit, but once, once they kind of get their permit, there's a problem. They're too close to a property or too close to a building on the property, too close to the road, uh, things of that nature. And that's, that's more or less why we want people coming to give a building permit. Come and talk to the young ladies at the, at the counter. The city, they can take the information and apply and take a check and then forward me the permit information. I can go out and expect it before you ever get started and hopefully avoid, uh, some of the problems we're seeing. People being become the board of zoning appeals asking for relief from our requirements, our setback requirements and things. Because, uh, it does, I think, put the board of zoning appeals members and county, or city council in a precarious position at times politically and otherwise. You gotta tell somebody no, uh, after they've already went to the expense of putting a building out there. Whether it's, and that doesn't matter whether it's a roll off shed or whether it's a built in place structure. Uh, anyone is required to get a building permit in the city of Watertown. And not only that, as my role for the county is required to get a permit in the county as well. Same thing goes for schools and desks. Thank you.
We will, uh, I'll, I'll do that in my next, there's one coming out next year too, I already did last Friday. And I will do that next time.
I know all three of us felt bad about having to, the guy hadn't moved the building because he's, it was, it wasn't okay. And we sort of felt bad about having to have it done, but it's got to be stopped.
Well, it's not the only one we've had. We've got another one in the last year or eight years.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'll do what count on that. And then, uh, we're also working on, uh, planning to include in next year's budget an increase for what Tom does for us and allow him to take over here everything for us. Uh, so that, uh, when they make application or call here, we just without a description, straight to Tom's office. He's doing that pretty much now for the same amount of money we were paying, um, for lesser things from him. So I appreciate, uh, you don't know how much, and we've got the board of zoning bills in the county. Thirdly, we have had a meeting in two or three months and we've got something like, what, thirty something cases, kind of?
Twenty, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Boy, I could also reference that and just to kind of amplify. Uh, we've had several cases where people are just not paying attention to regulations. They don't even bother to check the regulations. Don't listen to anybody but city officials about codes and regulations that are costly when you do not follow them. We got to stop, we got to get through the line on some of those things going on in the community, especially as things grow.
Okay. We could have worked that.
Of course.
It's only as good as the people who. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you, Tom.
You guys have a good evening.
Okay, um, we move on into the report time. Um, again, we got written reports from everybody. The first one that's looking up tonight would have been Chief Clay Tom. He has given you a fire truck response report and also some things. One very important thing on there, uh, uh, Wilson County EMA or we'll let it win over. Has donated a surplus two thousand international forty-nine hundred single cap fire engine to us. It's actually been sitting over there for a while and it's not been used. The county's emergency management committee and the budget committee have approved this as surplus and donated to Watertown. Blake and his folks have checked it out and are anxious to, uh, to use it. The only restriction the county put on it was when we got ready to get rid of it. Uh, it would go back to the county for them to get whatever was out of the bag and would come out of it. So I have a problem recommending to you that we accept the no motion from Wilson County of this fire truck. I need somebody to.
I'll make a motion we accept it.
Second.
Okay, have a motion of a second. Any discussion on that? All right, if not, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Is Katie joining the meeting?
She not shown up on screen yet?
No.
She'll pop up there when she's ready.
But is she there now? Can she hear us?
I'm not really sure.
Okay. Yeah, all right. I'll, I'll try to watch them. Y'all, y'all get my attention, but I'll miss something, please. Uh, the other thing I want to mention to you tonight, doesn't require any action, but I issued a proclamation today. Go along with the county mayor and other, uh, folks in the county designated the week of May seventeen through twenty-three as emergency medical services week. It, uh, the resolution is intended to cover first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, train members of the public, and other out of hospital medical care providers. And we won't, the surgeon won't recognize him for what they're doing, but those who are paying and volunteering and for their thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education. And never have we seen that what they do more importantly than what we have seen in this county in the last thirty months, primarily since the evening of our service and the pandemic. So, uh, that proclamation is issued in support of them and appreciation for them. And I'm thankful for the folks that we have on this end to play a major role in not only our city, but in helping participate in the county. Uh, some mighty folks out there. Um, next, did anybody have any questions on that? I'm sure we'll get corroded and pick you off. Okay, the next thing then is the police report, uh, that was in Keith Lane tonight. Um, you can see his report there, both of the number of incidents and calls and also the, uh, patrol miles that they are doing. There are some things we are looking into over there without being going public with it. But, uh, that's something that we will be looking into in the next few days. Um, this morning.
Morning.
Uh, so this, that will be, uh, we'll, we'll be looking at that. That's probably all I need to say. Anybody have any questions about the report? It did look to me to be very standard, so. All right, and the final thing, the final report that we have is from, uh, uh, the sewer operator, David Smith. Uh, the Musineering Farm has completed their survey for the work that's going to be done here. We had a discussion with several state officials yesterday and a conference call from, it's scheduled to last two hours, lasting about an hour and twenty minutes. Um, Steve Jones from, uh, Water Management is on there with us, uh, representing the city as well. And it looks like things are on track for dirt to start being turned in the fall. Uh, we are filled up right now because the folks here want to get the money from the sewer reviving, the state reviving fund. Uh, is going, not, does not go to review any plans until July first. So, uh, it looks like that's something that will occur shortly thereafter. But we are at the, uh, point where they've done the survey work and we have part of their plans. So once those plans become final, of course, once the folks, uh, once we approve it and the folks who've loaned the money, uh, sign off on it. So, uh, we're making progress. I have to be honest with you, not as fast as I had hoped. But there are things planned into this and we're waiting to slow down the last sixty days or so. So we don't have any control over that. Anybody have any, any comments or questions on that? From the south that you don't. And we'll go into some items of old business. I thought this to a group now, but let me go with the same list. Y'all just inspire me and mirror with me. But today is my grandson Max's fifth birthday, so I'm saying happy birthday to Max. And Davey right now, he's not watching because when I left, he was eating a big old soccer cake. And he was going through toys like there cannot be any toys left in Walmart tonight. So, uh, but anyway, he was, he was turning back the rest of the night, so he's had a big birthday and a happy form. We would be tired of your corporate birthdays, not as a whole, or at least in my. Um, all right, so old, I was a old business. Uh, the ordinance on second reading that, uh, modified the requirement to get, uh, to get a liquor. Let me start all over there. To be able to, um, serve alcoholic beverages. We did not modify that. I was not much, much, I'll get it out in a minute. Not proposing to modify the distance requirement. It will still be two hundred and fifty feet. But it will allow exceptions if you have a business that opens onto East Main Street. Uh, if your primary, uh, entrance to the building opens on East Main Street. So, uh, it will affect two or three businesses there. We are documenting them first reading unanimously in April. And I'm recommending to you tonight on second reading.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this?
I got one question. Suppose they have, uh, a door opening on East Main, but they also have one opening on the square.
It will have to designate that on East Main as the primary entrance and use.
Would they have to close, have to block the other one off?
That was not my intention for that.
An emergency exit maybe.
Yeah. And I know that one on the square is a bigger door than one on the side. They'll have to designate it and use it as a primary entrance. And I did talk to the proprietor about that before we, before I offered this. Other question? Tom? That's a good question. Okay, ready to vote? All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Anybody to vote? Okay. That is now in order to the city of Watertown. Um, the other item of old business I've got is since the last meeting, our city guys have, uh, removed the old playground equipment and it is now located behind the city shop. We talked last night, uh, last time about what to do with it. We, uh, there was a little bit of confusion on my part, uh, at the last meeting about what we had done before. And I think Lisa went back and looked in the minutes and we talked about, the city of Alexandria requested it, but we didn't make any action on it. So, uh, today she checked with the city of Alexandria. They are still interested in it. But they will, uh, their meeting is not until next week. So the question for us, I think, the first question is, before we do anything with it, we'll have to declare a surplus. And then the second question becomes, do you want to transfer it to the city of Alexandria if they wish to have it? If so, do you want to transfer it at low expense or do you want to put a price on it? So, uh, those are kind of the steps we need to go through to, to talk about it.
I'll make a motion we declare it surplus.
Okay, have a motion to declare a surplus. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Tommy?
Would there be anything on a legal implement that we need to have in writing to keep us from any liability? Anything that break or scratch or whatever here, you know, just thinking about that.
That's good, that's a good question. We'll have to do a bill of sale or a bill of transfer to them and you'll say.
Keep us, yeah.
Yeah, once we hand it to you.
Okay.
That's, that's a very good point.
And I would have, I hope it's wonderful for twenty years long, but just in the end, I'd like to look out at your ends.
The motion, second on the floor is to declare a surplus. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Still not picking up anybody, Chris, on, on here, so. I haven't seen her.
Send her a message. She needs to basically dial into it, so hopefully she'll pop in.
Okay. Okay, I just don't want to cut her off and speak to her if she wishes to speak. Okay, now we're back. We declared a surplus. What was your wish that we do with it?
Uh, I'd like to know what condition of it is, ma'am. Is it?
They're scared. Okay. That's okay. We got you. Have you heard where we are? Okay, let me bring you up to date and then Tony's got a comment. We have just declared the old playground equipment that we have taken up surplus. Now the question is, uh, do we transfer it to Alexandria without cost if they want it? Or do we sell it? And that's, I think, Tony's getting ready to ask the question.
Okay, thank you.
And that was what is the current condition of it after it was taken out? Is it still good or?
As far as I know, it is.
Some of it that I've seen over there doesn't look good.
Yeah, I don't think it's the best in the world, but, uh, I guess it might depend on maybe if I can do that, I guess. I guess it's usable, but it's a certain constancy.
You know, being as we have help of ours, I sort of think we just let it in and have it.
Well, and, and I agree with that, Hal, because there's ways that we can trade out a little bit. You know, we need something, uh, we do that sometimes with other, uh, I won't say this, Hal, these are other providers. If they need something, somehow we help them and in return, they, they provide us something. So I think it'd be a good show to them. I don't know that we bring a lot of money. Uh, and we don't need it for our budget. I didn't budget to get that money, so. Uh, I, I tend to agree with you on that. I think it'd be, if they want it. They might have to agree to, as, as Randy said a while ago, they don't have to agree to accept it. Total liability on them. We're done, but we're exhausted, so.
Did the other co, the company, it brought the new in? Did they take the old side?
Uh, they, uh, I, have you had any discussions on that?
Just been in contact with them.
Okay. I have not talked to them. I don't even know when their plans are. Um, how frankly, I hadn't been in a real hurry for them to come in. Because once we put it up, people are going to want to use it. And right now, they can't. So hopefully as soon as they.
Gives that ground time to settle down over there too. Uh, what did you want to do, Hal? Just give it to them? Is that what, is that what you wanted to do?
Yeah, we've had help of ours, so it might be, it'd be something else.
I, 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 I'm from down there.
Okay, somebody want to?
Mike?
Yes?
I'm having trouble hearing. It sounds like you guys are in an echo chamber.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you well.
Um, and so it's, it's hard to follow the conversation because it's like we're all tripping on answers.
What, I didn't hear that last part, but I want to hear what you said.
Probably not. Probably not. I'm just doing it. I'm like, we're all tripping on answers. Anyway, I'd rather see, I'd rather see the slide if Alabama still wants it with kids playing on it than in a museum. Even though I understand, I'd rather go to a museum, that's an adult. But I'd rather at first I put kids playing on it, you know?
Okay. All right, Chris, is there a, can we return this? That will help?
It's really odd. It's just a room, so.
Okay.
I believe that I remember that they were going to give us a discount on the others. It would include them getting the slide. Is that correct? Like a, uh, they take off.
Yeah.
Certain amount.
Things have changed since, since then. The guy who sold us and the, and designed that comp, designed that playground is no longer with that company. And so I haven't had contact one other time with the lady now that's going to be doing the, that's actually going to oversee the design of the layout of it. Uh, I will get in contact with her and see about that slide. It would be, the slide is the only thing that they showed me to us then because it has the name on it. And it was one of the first pieces of equipment he said that they, they were sold.
Did you hear that?
Not, not to make out what he was saying, I think that Brandon was talking about it because it was not possible to tell what he was saying. I'm a little worried about the recording YouTube version of this as far as it is to understand what's being said.
Uh, I just, I, I, I think that they would like, we've been in contact.
It's not me better.
I'll get in contact with the company tomorrow and see if they're interested in the slide. And if they are interested in the slide and I can work some kind of deal out. If there was a deal worked out or written, it would have to be probably written in our contract for it to be effective now. Then we'll, we'll see.
Just to put it forward like it was, I wouldn't know what you mean, but tell them well. Did they look at value?
What are we talking about now?
Uh, how, how many people? Do we have people watching this?
Three.
I wonder, I wish I knew when I'm watching so they could hear. If they could tell us what they're hearing.
So everything you say you can hear in the audio from the iPad is clear going out the internet? The problem is where, you know, you haven't talked to her, she hasn't listened to the iPad. There's just no way to send the iPad back into the iPad.
Okay, um, Brandon was saying, I think I, I hope I paraphrased this accurately. He hasn't had any discussions with the guy who wanted the slide because he's no longer with them. He had any discussion with the folks who were left as to whether or not they want the slide.
Your brain, Alan. It's not sure that last time I could always hear you fine, but this time even your brain. I don't know if it's background sound pulling the microphone or what, like your voices.
When I was speaking, Katie, it was nobody here speaking. I was the only one.
It's happening again. I don't know what the story is.
Okay.
Would she like to say, I should call her on the cell phone and just put her on speakerphone? That way the two, the two things are not feeding back on each other.
The request uh, or, or the comment here, Katie, was, would you like one of us to call you on the cell phone so that you can hear that? Would that be better?
Well, and then, and I would talk through that person, whoever it was.
On speakerphone.
On speakerphone.
On speakerphone.
Uh, we can try it. I'll try anything you want. I just am worried that it's fierce to be recording this and it's supposed to be available to the public.
Well, the IT guy just told me that it's coming through to the public clear.
I just asked the public if one of them would comment on the audio and I'm waiting on response.
Okay, and we're waiting on response. So there's not the three people who listen to it at this time.
It's up to six.
It's what, we're up to six? Okay, we're up to six now, I'm told.
Well, presumably some people might want to watch it later.
Well, that's true. That's true. That's true. What do you suggest, Ray?
At the moment, there's not really much we can do about it. It's mainly having to do with the size of the room and how little is in it. And something will have to be addressed later.
Uh, one of the members of the public said the audio is clear to the public. So it must be just the feedback of Katie. So I think she should just call somebody and, and remind.
One of the members of the public just commented that it is clear on the audio that's going out on the public.
Well, then something's really wrong with the website.
Why don't we just put you on speakerphone? Why don't you call, why don't you call somebody and put you on speakerphone? And we'll just let you talk through speakerphone.
I'll see if she calls.
She's calling.
She's calling somebody else.
I got a new truck that turns with, you put your phone on Bluetooth and you talk to it.
Right.
But when you, but when, yeah, through the radio. But when you get out of your truck.
Okay.
I can hear you.
You have to turn the Bluetooth back on.
I can hear you.
You got it, it's connected. Mr. Mayor?
All right, we proceed on then. Uh, I think that's one of the TV stations that refer to as technical difficulty. Um, we were debating whether, what to do with the equipment now that we have declared it surplus. What is the pleasure of the county?
Do we have any way to get it to them? I know, I noticed when they brought it from here over there that they had to go very slow bringing it.
I would, I would, I would leave that burden on the municipality of Alexandria to come get it and move it.
If we give it to them, they come, come and get it.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to donate to Alexandria as is, where it is. If the company does not want the slide, it be included.
Be, be included.
As is, where it is.
Yes.
All right, and would you wait after that as they prepare an agreement that includes us when they take it?
Yes.
And that they come get it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what you said.
And our fellows help them load it, take down the slide if that be the case.
Well.
All right, we got a motion. Is there a second?
I was taking that motion.
Okay. We got a motion and a second to transfer it to the City of Alexandria if they want it as is, where it is. Uh, the slide goes with it if they want it. If not, it will go to the museum or whatever.
No, no.
If, if the company does not want the slide, it goes to Alexandria.
I got it in reverse, I'm sorry. If the company does not want the slide, it goes to Alexandria and they will give us an agreement accepting the property and leaving us a liability. We're good with it? Now I guess. Yes.
I'm ready for discussion when you're ready for discussion.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Yes, I was saying.
Okay, I'm sorry. Brandon, second it? Okay, Katie, we're in discussion.
Is there a reason that we're prioritizing the company over Alexandria for the slide? Is it, is it a discount or something related to the slide?
You want to answer that, Brandon?
I don't know that I have that for I, I'm not. I'd have to look at the contract again. I just, I, for some reason, I thought it was wrote in the contract about the slide, but I, I, I'm not for sure.
I seem to remember that they were going to give us a discount of so much and they took the slide.
Yeah, I, I, I think so too. But we can look at the contract and see.
Okay, if there's a discount related to not getting the slide, then I think this will responsibility win. But if it's just that they want it, I'd rather it go to kids first. Do you know where the government's museum?
Yeah, yeah, I understand what you're saying. Uh, I'm just sitting there thinking, they first quoted us a price and then they reduced it. And whether they reduced it because of the slide or not, I don't know. But they did, we did their reduction in price. And it was a pretty substantial reduction.
Yeah.
Who is the day that you're referring to?
Play, play?
The, the company asked you.
Game time, game time.
Gave us the deduction to put the new playground in if we gave them the slide that we had.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it was worded exactly like that. I mean, the deduction was to help us lower and meet our budget also. But in accordance with that, I believe they asked for that slide.
And they want it because they.
We, it's, it was just a piece of equipment that they sold. One of the first pieces of equipment they sold. It's meaningful to them. And it's pretty dangerous to everybody else.
Yeah, there was a reduction in price, a pretty significant. I don't know if it was tied with the slide, it could have been.
So we need to find that out before we agree to give the slide to Alexandria.
And that's what you're saying?
Yeah, that.
Provide that if we find out.
I had that in that.
That, yeah, we had that in that motion.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, are, are we all clear now? Clear as mud?
Mud.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, you announce. We'll find that out. Katie, I don't know if you heard or not, but I made a comment that I don't know when they're coming to put the new equipment in, but I haven't really been anxious for them to do it because of the parks closed. Once we get that in there, people are going to want to use it. So I'm hopeful that we can open this up in the next two or three weeks, but we'll just have to see what the governor and the, and the CDC uh are saying.
I do have one more comment related to the park.
Sure.
We still have a donation box here that nobody ever came and picked up.
I didn't understand what you said.
We still have a donation box, not Alyssa, that no one ever came and picked up.
Yeah, we have several, we have several of them out. Uh, it's kind of been, uh, Jeff says it's kind of been for the virus thing. Uh.
I can't tell what he's saying.
It, that has, there's more than one that hasn't been picked up, but we will have them picked up by the end of the week. We've been kind of holding off because of the virus. Some of the places that we haven't had access to, and some of them have already taken them off the shelf and put them up. So we do need to collect about three or four boxes. I will make sure that gets done. And they've been being counted at City Hall and we haven't had access to City Hall.
We'll get you a little one.
I thought. Uh, one other thing I'd like to talk about the playground is, is the ground itself be a good time to, I don't, well, I say be a good time. I'm a bug man, not a herbicide man. But uh, we need to get a grass killer down on that ground as soon as possible.
What do we need to put down there that's not harmful to anybody that uses it? You got, did you write recommendations on it?
No, but I believe co-op. I tell you what, uh, the uh, the, the ag, state ag, uh, our, our state ag or our county ag service will be able to tell you what herbicides we could use or, I don't even know if herbicides is the right word. Uh.
Sounds good.
Grass killer, whatever, whatever we need to put down there to uh, stop that growth and allow for that.
Root corilla could be acceptable.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll get the, we'll get that for root corilla.
I probably have a license to buy it if we don't have it. But it's municipal, municipalities, I believe, with your grandfather in for license for that stuff.
Okay, that was the items of old business that I have. I have three of the items of new business, if I can get my paperwork in order here. Um, I have some what I consider to be extremely good news. Uh, four of us. And that is the Tennessee Central Economic Authority has approved us for a ninety thousand dollar grant for us to repave the industrial park roads. And um, it would be from Main Street around to Linwood Road and then on, I think there's a purple tiger grad that goes up to the cul-de-sac. The Industrial Development Board of Wilson County is going to vote in June very hopefully for an additional twenty-two thousand dollars. So we will have a hundred and twelve thousand dollars that will not cost us a damn. The Tennessee Central folks, so let me make sure. Tennessee Central Economic Authority is a four county uh governmental, not real sure what to call them, but Charlie Lyons is their director. Charlie's been a real friend to this community and, and they have been wanting to do something here. They get so much money per year and they spread it around. And they were looking for something to do in Watertown. G C Hickson at the J C C D B put together this proposal. And when the money comes through, the proposal is so that we don't have to bid it and we don't have to go to the expense of hiring somebody and use part of the money with the bidding is to piggyback the bid that the road commission has for paving in Wilson County. So whatever they would be paying for uh, um, asphalt or, or base or whatever they've got to put down, but uh, that is the plan. And so hopefully it will pay everything that I talked about for that one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Now, I think there's about one point two miles in there. Uh, and the last word I had was it costs about ninety thousand dollars to pave a mile. About ninety thousand dollars to pave a mile was the last word I heard. It may be less now because oil is down or I, I'm not sure. Um, I know there may be people sitting out there, maybe people sitting around this table that think, why can't we use that money somewhere else to pay? Because we have a lot of places that need to be paved. The reason we can't is because it is tied to economic development. And so we have the industries out there plus we have a little bit of vacant land left. Uh, so that, uh, the ninety thousand is ours. Hopefully the twenty-two will come to us in early June and then we can get this done um, out there during this summer. So that's a nice thing for us, that's a nice thing.
Is the uh, is the uh, road commission going to pave it for us?
That's still got to be talked about, so we may have to hire that gun for somebody to do it. But we can, uh, the idea was on this amount of money, I ain't going to say. Ooh, okay, that's per lane.
Per lane.
Yeah. Tony just showed me something that said it could cost sixty to ninety thousand dollars per lane. So um, hopefully we'll come in on the sixty side. Uh, we'll see. But yes, back to your question, Brandon, I don't know whether they'll do the paving or not. We may have to hire somebody. Or they, they have contracts with people who do state road projects, so. Uh, but in any event, it's a good thing for us and will give us a chance to spruce up and uh, upgrade the industrial park. And you will notice that there is a new building being built up at the Far Western End. That's the folks from Cookville who uh, moved their operation out here. Talked to them the other day. They were uh, anticipating an opening in a few weeks, want to have a roof cutting, want to have everybody invited. And will also, as I understand it, be doing tours of their building. So it's going to be a nice addition out there too.
That, you know, when we build that out there, you know, we really need to think about the traffic that's on there. You know, the binder, there, there's, there's different types of asphalt that would go on Main Street versus would go into an industrial park.
Yep.
So.
And I'm hoping the road commission can help us with that.
Yeah.
It's also some bad spots out there that's sunk down.
Quite basically, basically.
It's more base foot down.
Yeah.
But it's ninety thousand right now, hopefully it'll be a hundred and twelve thousand if we get them half. So uh, it's a very nice uh, very nice thing for us. And a lot of people went to the back for us on that, including the uh, the county mayor that sits on that board and G C Hickson and, and uh, Tandy Stokes at the J C C D B. So good, good folks. Uh, any other questions or comments about that?
Do we have a question, comment? Do we have a time to use the money? Let's say it's for someone that shares more toward the ninety side. And so we're looking at more like a, what would be two hundred and something thousand? Hold on. That didn't happen, a two hundred and something thousand dollar draw. It's a, what's the front line on, is it a user, who's a grand?
I don't know that we ever talked about the timeframe. I can tell you from everybody that I've talked to about it, the intention is that we use it this summer. That we use it soon as we get it.
And I think the ballot ballot project, if I think that it's important for us to do, I'm just really, if, who knows how much it is, right? And if we commit to it, then where does the money come from? Or do we approve it, assume, stipulate further discussion after we know how much it will cost?
Well, unless we appropriate more money, we'll just have to scale down the project, you know, to do what we can. But I think there's a reason that they have chosen these figures. I think these folks have looked at it, they've done, uh, I think I sent y'all all the information or the ladies did. Uh, and y'all know all the information that we got from uh.
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, I'll get it to you because there's several drawings in there and you'll see what they were anticipating to cover. I'll get that out to you tomorrow. Uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, um, you should have had in front of you tonight our most recent audit. Uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Okay, um, you should have had it in front of you tonight, our most recent audit, uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen? Okay, no, you don't, we've got one here for you. So, uh, they're just getting theirs now, okay? Uh, but let me just hit a couple of highlights for you and I'll hit the ups and the downs. Uh, this is a good audit, in my opinion. The, uh, at the end of June thirty, two thousand nineteen, the city's governmental funds reported combined ending fund balance of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. That's an increase of ninety-eight thousand, two hundred dollars over the previous year. The, uh, unassigned fund balance for the general fund was three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. And it says fifty point eight seven percent of total general fund's footprint. Let me tell you why that's an important figure. Now, with the downturn in some revenues that we are anticipating, I heard a couple of people say that a good rule of thumb for governments is to have six months in some type of rainy day fund or whatever to get you through if your revenue's fall. This is exactly six months. And this was at the end of last year. I can tell you right now, it's up about a hundred thousand more now. So, I hope we don't have to use it, but we have it there. I said on the radio this morning, and I'll stick with this, I do not intend to bring you a budget with any increases in it for taxes, water and sewer or anything. Uh, I believe we're set on revenues unless this time it takes a very drastic downturn, and I'm not anticipating that, but this is good to know that we've got this money put away. Uh, our debt decreased by sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. And our total net position increased by a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the previous year. Now, we do have two findings. The first finding is the one that we get every year, and that is, uh, we're not able to segregate the, the appropriate responsibilities in everything we do here because we don't have enough people. And we have basically three people working on that. We have the city recorder, we have the city clerk, and then we have contracted with Lady Diakos's office three or four years ago. Uh, yes, this is on page, uh, hang on a second.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, it's good. It is on page sixty-six, probably appropriate. Uh, the, uh, we have contracted with Lady Diakos, so we have segregated responsibilities among three people. Uh, this is a finding that you will have for many years, uh, and we've had for many years, and I can tell you from the small governments that I represent, they get the same finding. The second finding has to do with fund balances, with money that needs to be transferred from one fund balance to another. And we corrected that, if you recall, in a corrective action plan two years ago. We are now in the second year, second or third year of that, of the time here plan. You'll see on page sixty-eight that the response that we gave, that the auditor gave to the contractor's office, that is what I said, we have a corrective action plan. Uh, it was adopted and it will conclude in January of two thousand twenty-three. So, we are past our second year. So, it was a good audit, the findings do not, uh, wish they weren't there, but on the other hand, they will be there for a while. Uh, it is not need that there's anything, uh, in fact, we're in a better financial state now. The need was my thirty-seven, to be frank.
Is this the first?
Not a good job.
Is this the first budget that we've had put together like this from?
First audit?
The first audit we've had from this company here.
No, no, we've been getting from John Lill for about three or four years.
And it just looks better, it looks, I, I, it just looks like the numbers are better, the, maybe the graphics or whatever. But it's a little easier to understand.
Well, if, if y'all will recall, I know Brandon will, perhaps Tony, and I don't remember how long, how long you been on the board, Kristen?
This is my third time.
So, you're, you're wealthy, left here? You'll remember.
About, yeah, about eight or something, I don't know.
When, when the, uh, economy took a downturn in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nine, we had to go back, we've been, my recommendation, city council vote, we had to go back and we basically cut our budget by seven percent. We cut out three positions and we had to start building back the financial structure because when things went south, uh, we paid our bills, but we didn't put away a lot of money. But we paid our bills. From that time on, we have been putting away money, we have been watching our strength. We've added things back, personnel, equipment, and so, the, the culmination of that's what you see in the audit that has developed over the last eight or nine years. And unless we have something significantly, uh, bad happen between now and June thirty, next year's audit will be better.
Yeah, you know, Mike, and I'd like to say that during the tough times and then rough times, that these city employees, they didn't go look for other jobs.
Nope.
And even during this economic upturn where people in McDonald's are making twelve, thirteen dollars an hour, uh, uh, forty hour weeks, they're not leaving us. And we, and, and I would like to think that as we become more solvent and as, that, that we begin to, to quit nickel and dime, I'm, I don't mean, I don't mean nickel and dime, and you know what I'm saying? I'd like to see significant pay raises for these young men trying to raise families that can probably go out and make more money in the private sector than they can here and, and, and on the government sector. When you can operate a backhoe and, and operate, uh, equipment and do the things that they do, um, the wages that we pay, that I admire them and I know that we need them. And, and, and I don't know what each one of them makes, but I, I don't, I don't know what none of them makes, quite frankly. But, uh, I know they didn't leave us, and then the ones that we do seem to get, uh, that work, that young boy works for ones with, with them right now, he's a worker. And I'd like to see him rewarded, and you do reward him each year of this budget. I'm not saying that.
You would, yeah?
And you do, and you have rewarded them as we went along, but...
Y'all have too, I put it as it is, y'all have.
Right, but I would like to see, you know, a significant, if, if the budget could allow it, to see a, a, a good raise.
Well, my plan is, and had been two, three, or four months now, we've talked about it a little, was to try to upgrade our salaries in the next year, and I still hope to do that, um...
You know, that's not, maybe I'm saying that wrong, I'm jumping on front. You know, when I was in government and, and, and with Wayman, everybody got raised or nobody got raised. You know, in, in government, well, it's like down at the courthouse, either we give every county employee raise, or if I got in, nobody getting no raise. Well, some of them people working down at courthouse at the clerk's office make a pretty good money for what they do. But some of them guys out there digging, doing some of them backhoe jobs or doing some other jobs, or maybe even working the office did not make. I'm not saying that everybody has to have a, a, a large raise, but I think the job that they're doing should be comparable to the private sector.
Well, and I love that we'll get there in one year.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that.
But my, my plan was, and still is, to try to increase, uh, salaries fairly significantly. But there's two things we've gotta watch, and that is the next sixty days when the figures start coming in from sales tax, because we don't have it yet, they stay too much behind. We gotta see how much that's gonna be down. And then the second thing is, you know, even in good times when you give those things, you gotta be able to sustain it when you have that downturn and go to the bad times. So, I gotta try to balance that off. My, I really think we've got to do something for our police department. Uh, and I know I've got to do something over that. And I wanna do something for everybody, like you say, the folks that do the backhoe and all of that, but... Uh, you know, the fact of the matter is, and we won't stop this, but I'd like to be able to cut into it a little bit. And that is, if we get a good police officer and train him, they go somewhere else because they would have...
You know, a, as a firefighter, used to be firefighter, I, I don't know that we'll ever be able to compete at that level to where we can do that. Because it ain't all about money, it's all, some of it's about the excitement of being able to, you know, to do the things that they like to go do.
Yeah.
Whether it's fighting fires or fighting crime, and, and, uh, so, I, you know, I, I, I think we've been doing a fine job at that, but that's, that, that police department retaining them at that wage is firefighting and policemen, you could probably open that position up for minimum wage and there'd be fifty lined up to get that job. I mean, it's not all about the money when it comes to the industry services.
Yeah, there's a lot of people, that's their calling.
That's their calling.
And there's a lot of people in this county that own the place.
Now, once they get home over there, they wanna talk about the money.
Yeah, well, I mean, they, you know, local red cross, the same thing, they're better for it.
That's right.
Uh, let me follow up then on, on this month's budget report. Uh, through maybe eight, which is, I wrote it down somewhere. Uh, we are eighty-five and a half percent through the year. We're forty-two days away from beginning of fiscal year. All of our funds are solid. You will look at the water and sewer and it looks a little bit out of line. Keep in mind that we have paid our consultant a substantial amount of money over the last ten months that I didn't have budgeted, so I've got to go back and do a budget minimum and pull that in from our savings that we hope to get back when we do this project, but that will put it back in line. So, uh, let me, let me say this to you, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna use the numbers. Um, they don't use percentages. The amount of money that this city has right now available to it, and I'm not counting the grants we got, cause that's money going in and out, but the amount of money that is available to this city right now is ninety-one point seven percent of what we busted for expenditures this year. In other words, we not only have enough to cover all our budget, we've got another ninety-one percent. So, that is the goal, that if you get a bad time, you got some money to get through there. Same thing you do in your household, the rule of thumb is try to keep enough money put away to have three months of bills. And so, what I heard in the government was six months. So, we, we've got that, uh, and I'm extremely proud of what, what everybody around this table has done. And I hope we can hang on to as much of that as we can. But we'll, we'll have to get into it, I figure, a little bit over the next four, five, or six months. I hope to bring you a budget in June, that's my plan. Uh, I don't like doing a budget before the end of the year, cause I don't know what the dollars, the final dollars are. But the state is, is certainly recommending that this time, and we'll try to meet that. Probably what that means is if we approve a budget for next year before we know what the final numbers for this year were, we'll have to go back in two, three months and adjust our budget. That's okay, it's just it will, it will work, but that's okay, we'll, we'll play by the rules and, and do what's, uh, needs to be done. The only other, let me ask, does anybody have any questions about that? I threw a lot of numbers at you, but if you leave here tonight and don't remember the numbers, you'll say they're all good, cause they are. Um, and you know, for people out there that operate major governments, big governments, they hear our numbers, you know, they probably laugh, that's okay, that they'll continue with their financial problems and we'll live on them all.
Well, you know, that, 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 that is one of the things that my partner in crime, and we won't call names, uh, says that, you know, that joint economic development board and that money that we spend out there compares, it is virtually, you know, small amount compared to what the other do. And we could use that money here a lot better, you know? But we've just got ninety-one thousand dollars worth of payment, I can't wait to make the phone call when I get home. But, uh, but that's one, that's one thing.
Let me give you the figures, I know what you're talking about. Let me give you the figures so that you'll know, uh, we get, we pay them three thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars a year.
Right.
We're about to get a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Right.
That's forty years worth of payments.
That's right.
That's not a lot.
And I tried to explain that, you know, he, he, he wants to talk about businesses and growth and all that, well, maybe, maybe not, but mm, we got, like, you'd think it's forty-one years worth of payment.
Yep. Alright, the other thing I need to talk to you about, by the way, did my guy get with this, just a second?
Let me check that, hold on, he came by here.
Okay, we're gonna hit pause here just a minute.
He said he was gonna send something.
Okay, I've been at a birthday party, so I, I didn't get it, it could've sent it there. Let me go ahead and tell you what we're, what she's checking on. Um, I don't know, maybe there's a way to say it, because we have term lights in this building. And we have term lights pretty bad. So, uh, last Thursday night when I came in to get the checks, the payroll checks to sign them, I got hit with a swarm of bugs out there and I thought, well, you know, we got these outside lights, it's a little night, it's a degrees, and I thought, maybe it's the, you know, but it wasn't, it's term lights. So, uh, April and I talked about it Friday morning, we can see them everywhere, you can see them around that vent, you can see them up in the city clerk, the city reporter's office now. So, uh, she called the Cooks Pest Control Friday and they came in and, and, and gave us a deal or something. And let me be upfront with you, they said underneath this building needs to be black paper, you know what I'm talking about?
Moisture barrier.
Moisture, moisture barrier, that's the technical term I was looking for. The vents in this building are forty-three years old, they recommended putting...
Automatic vents.
There you go. And then...
What do you think?
Training for termite.
Only homes.
He knows, he knows the drill. So, together, to do all of that, the bid was three thousand nine hundred dollars. I said to the gentleman, and I talked to him on the phone, I'm not gonna authorize that, I'll have to take that to the council. Got to thinking today, um, you know, there are other ways to put that paper down, put those vents in, and then let a pest control company handle the termite problem. So, ask somebody to come up today and look at it, and that, do we have it pointing to?
He said he's doing it now.
Okay. We have it out there?
Uh, the tent, the tent vents that they buy and put in here will cost twenty-one dollars a piece. They just slide out and slide in, you can put about ten in in an hour. And that black paper is fifty-five dollars a row, it costs me at eleven of the shooters, I pay, I buy probably three thousand or up, three thousand yards a month of it, so, uh, and it's fifty-two dollars a row, and if you take a hundred dollars worth, it'd take two rows to cover this. How many square feet in this building?
I believe two thousand thirty-six hundred and seventy-five, I believe.
Square feet?
I believe that's right.
It would take three rows of it, then, there's twelve hundred square feet in a row, if you use twelve by one hundred. Be a hundred and fifty dollars worth of material, how many vents is there?
Uh, I'm, I'm looking for what was sent from the, I think y'all very well.
Do, you know, whether, whether whatever we do here, do not go in Cooks as a minute, Cooks makes more money by the time I drink my first cup of coffee than I do all day long. Uh, do not put them, uh, bait stations in the ground. That, 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 that is a money-making, you must treat with licorice.
The, Brandon, uh, what they're showing on their drawing here is three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square feet.
It's twelve hundred, twelve hundred square feet to a row, and it's fifty-two dollars a row.
Alright, the, uh, the bid that, that, uh, we just showed the bid is not to exceed two thousand dollars, probably eighteen hundred, but it was not to exceed two thousand, to do what Brandon was talking about, and then the bid on the termite control. And then the bid on the termite control will separate it to nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Did you ask me what chemical he was gonna use? You must use two different types of chemical, you must use Tarsus, or you must use Termador. Or this building here will never get rid of it. Termador is the best they ever made, the, the patent wore off, and then we're able to make a generic formula of it called Tarsus. And that would be the only two chemicals that would be effective in here, the liquid. Needs to be a liquid treatment, not a bait station.
Alright, I sent this stuff out to y'all, I think, did we send it out yesterday?
Monday, I think.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, I did too.
Uh, so I don't know the answer to that, Brandon, I, I just looked, I'm a bottom-line guy, and I looked at the number.
Nine hundred dollars to treat this building for termites is a good price, if they use the right chemical.
Okay. Nine thirty-nine, whoa, that's the, now, alright, this, this way, you tell me what this means. Install three black cores. What is that?
Three black what?
Cores, C-O-R-E-S.
See, they're gonna go with them, they're gonna go with them bait, is that Cook's?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna put, I don't know, Cook do nothing but bait stations. And then bait stations is a month, and then they can do, how much are they gonna charge you to come check them every three months to a year?
I don't know, all I got here are proposals, I sent it to y'all, by the way.
Yeah, well.
Nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Yeah, but they're allowed to charge about three to four hundred dollars a year just to come check their stations.
Yeah, there it is, annual renewal, thirty-four hundred and five dollars.
Crazy. I mean, if I had two hundred in them houses, I'd jerk my telephones out. I would just go take care of them houses.
Alright, the other proposal here was to do what we were talking about, the moisture barrier. And he's got thirteen vents here, Brandon, I hadn't counted them.
Okay, that's about right here.
Uh, and that is two thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. The proposal we've got from Rambo Smitty is two, not to exceed two thousand, could be eighteen, so that's a substantial.
You can buy, I can buy, you can buy these, you can buy twelve, they come twelve to a case for twenty-two or twenty-three dollars a case. And you actually knock them out of the hammer and then they slide in, I can put one in in five minutes. And them boys out there at work for us can too. Now, whether they'll crawl or if they're laid out poly or not, I don't know whether they'll do that or not, but you don't have to be a rocket scientist to do that either.
No, but you gotta be a slimmer guy. Y'all, y'all know, we're all gonna sit on the ground right here. So, that's gonna be a challenge. We're talking about having the city employees, but I don't know.
The city, the city employees can put the vents, and they can lay the plastic.
Is that something that you can kind of help them with?
Yep. I don't know what stays in situations like that, I don't know. I mean, I can, I, I'd be glad to come down and show them how to have it done. And I got two boys, I wouldn't charge anything for to go underneath there to help them. But the guy who bid nine hundred dollars to treat it for termites, that is a good price if he will use them to pro- are you on the phone with him?
If you could, send him the text on the phone.
If you, if you, if you could text him back and ask him what's the name of the term, termatic.
He's not, he's not, he was a student, treatment, that's coming from Cook.
Uh, Cooks will use Termador, but they're gonna use it in bait stations. And bait stations are nothing out there but a piece of balsa wood that has nothing in it. And they charge you four hundred, and when they come and check it every year, if they find termites that have hit that balsa wood, they take that piece of balsa wood out and dump it on a piece of cardboard that's impregnated with Termador and put it back in the ground. And them termites there carry it back to the colony, post-eliminate the colony. But if you'll read in the back of any termite label for any real estate transaction, it says it must be treated by a licensed exterminator within the last five years with a liquid treatment.
Alright, what's, what's the pleasure of the council? We, we got termites, that's where I'm gonna stop.
I'll be, we need to do something tonight about.
I would think that you should get bids. Uh, I mean, you, there's plenty of companies out there besides Cook's. I, I, the smaller, the smaller company don't mean that you can't kill termites, like you'll thirty-six thousand dollars worth of them last month. They, you, you put, uh, I just looked in the phone book, and I get me some, I do business with somebody local. And I'm gonna, I would wanna make sure they use Tarsus or Termador at four gallons per ten annual feed, for, for, for your debt.
Oh, no.
Do what?
I just can't hear anything that anybody can say, and it's really frustrating.
Shall I come say this?
Well, we're trying to, are you not hearing me through the, uh, cell phone?
No.
There, there's a company that just started, you can tell, he worked for SCAP for several years, just like I did, we opened his own company up. Priority, I don't know, what is his name? Uh, Priority Pest has sold to a company. But we can get you some names of some pretty good pest control companies, and I think they're good companies. And you can call and get you some estimates, but but the, but the, the tent vents, but Mike, the tent vents or vents, you probably have them, you may have them in your home, but they're, they're, it's got a coil on them, and just all they are, all they are is a coil. And when that coil gets fifty-five degrees, they, they, it tightens, and then aluminum veins close. And what that helps in a damp situation is that when, when it's, it's drier over there, these vents will open, and where it's damp, they will close, and we will pull, called cross ventilation, you will pull that air. Now, with technology today, we do much different things. We, we encapsulate, we put dehumidifiers in, and we do all kinds of things, but that's the only way.
Okay, what, what's the feeling of folks around here? Alright, and I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a recommendation that we not do the Cook's bid at this time, which will require no action, no approval. It will require no action. I am gonna recommend that we let Brother Brandon go ahead and fix this other day like it needs to be, and, and do it right. Um, and that will be at the expense of not more than two thousand, but he said probably eighteen hundred.
Is he putting the vents in too?
Yes, and there's a lot of stuff up under here.
It's horrible, why been up underneath it, it's horrible.
Yeah.
And if he's gonna really fix the damage, that's cheap.
Well, I don't know if we talked about fixing the damage, we talked about pulling out everything that's been left under there. Putting the black paper down and putting the vents in.
That's cheap enough.
I, I.
I get forty-five cents a square foot for doing it.
Well, you know, if you turn the city guys loose on it. They, they may start it and get pulled off and go to a water lane, they may have to rewater meters. You got something else?
Yeah, fifteen hundred dollars for a vapor, a refrigerator, vents.
Okay.
That's your eighteen hundred.
Okay. I'm gonna recommend that. Did you hear what it said there, Kenny?
No.
He can't do them vents for three hundred dollars.
I, I don't understand why you're not hearing, I'm talking to the top of my lungs.
We need to make sure he's putting in automatic vents. He couldn't hear me.
Nah, okay.
We sure hear you good, you're coming in loud and clear.
My motivation that we get, okay.
No, go ahead.
We need to work out with Mr. Smitty.
Okay.
For the eighteen hundred, not to exceed two thousand.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to amend that, that they are automatic vents.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And it's a six mil, and it's a six mil moisture barrier.
Okay. Here's, here's the motion in second that's on the table. I pulled off the Cook's Pest Control proposal, which was around thirty-nine hundred dollars. Brother Rambo Smitty, the pastor up at the church here, and the one that oversaw putting this flooring in, has given us a bid to go under the building at eighteen hundred dollars, put down a moisture barrier, pull all this stuff out, and put in the climate-controlled vents, thirteen of them, for eighteen hundred dollars. That's the motion that's on the table. Then we'll see, Brandon wants us to bid the pest control, and we'll do that. And see not only what.
Termite control. Termite.
Termite control. And see.
The damage.
Well, I don't know how much damage is under there, so I don't know what to say about that.
And that wasn't in Cook's bid anyway, right?
No, no, no.
I don't think it was.
No, it wasn't.
Um, it was moisture barrier, three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square feet of six mil black moisture barrier, thirteen black automatic tent vents, does the same thing, excuse me, does the same thing about repairing damage.
Okay.
So, I, I think based upon what he's proposed, this is just me, what he's proposed and the work he did for us here, and how confidently and quickly it got handled, I, I think it's a good proposal, we've got a motion in second to do it. Do you, do you understand now what's on the table?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, further discussion?
It's two hundred and fifty-one dollars for a case of it. If he buys another one, he said, he, he's gonna pay taxes on it. He's gonna, he's gonna put them vents in for three hundred dollars, that cost him three hundred dollars just to buy them.
We're not gonna pay the tax.
Well, no, well, I'm, it's okay, so he's saving twenty-five dollars. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with him putting them in for three hundred dollars.
Okay, alright, are we ready to move? Okay, all in favor of saying?
Aha.
Alright, with you now, Miss? That's all I've got, thank goodness, uh. No, I, I've got a couple of information lying. Our next meeting will be June sixteenth at six o'clock. I hope that we are back to normal, but we'll just have to see. And the other thing, I, I've got a question or two about what are we gonna do about the Fourth of July? Uh, my thought would be that we continue our plans right now as we always have had them, and then if we have to call it off as we get closer, or reschedule it, we will. But I would sure like to see us do this, and you know, uh, y'all been to the fireworks displays over here, people pretty much spread out. Uh, they don't sit shoulder to shoulder, families sit together, but they don't, you don't have a hundred people sitting shoulder to shoulder. And, uh, as far as the parade, uh, we can encourage people, the only areas I see where it could really be a problem is right on the square. And we just have to encourage people to spread out. Uh, and maybe even modify our route a little bit, where we take in a little bit more, maybe go up a side street or something to give more people an opportunity to spread out. And I'd really hate to give up that Fourth of July celebration. So, I'm gonna keep that open unless y'all tell me not to. Uh, and we may have to, June sixteenth, we may have to pull the blood out. But right now, I don't see that it being settled, it's a way that it's necessary to do that right there. Everybody okay with that? Thoughts, Kenny?
I still wanted to talk about the termite thing.
Oh, okay.
I feel like we should ask urgently, entreat the termites.
Well, I don't disagree with that either.
Well, we.
Are we going to, um, treat this meeting like the others, where we can bring ourselves out of recess?
Yes, please.
Oh, let's see. Put out a bid soon, do we have to vote that we're gonna call for bids on the treatment of the termites?
No, we'll just do that, and, and let, let me say so that everybody knows. Projects of ten thousand dollars or more have to be formally bid. But anything under ten thousand can be informally bid, and informal is usually by telephone call and say, give me some type of proposal in writing. So, we'll try to get three of us. And I will ask at the end, I'd already planned on that, to recess this meeting, if I need to call you back, I will.
Right, I'd love for us to make the decision before the meeting.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be back four weeks from tonight, but, uh, still, that's four weeks, so. Uh, so we'll, we'll get those informal bids. Okay, alright, any more comments on the Fourth of July, anything? Okay, alright, I'm ready to go around the table, Mr. Brandon?
Uh, I don't really have anything, I, I did wanna ask Brandon, I wanna ask Brandon one thing. I noticed on the YouTube that the people that are subscribing or watching can leave comments and chat, and those go to you, did you answer that?
Yes, I did.
So, if there's a question that needs to go to my, you know, you'll be in touch with us and direct those questions to us. Okay, I think that's a great feature, I just wanted to know if that was you or how that, how that work?
Brandy was asking, Kenny, Brandy was asking, uh, the people that are watching, out in the viewing public can make comments in the chat lines, I understand. And she was asking if they would be brought to our attention if somebody had a comment or whatever, and Grant said they would be. Did I, did I say that right?
You did, you did, yes.
Anything else? Huh?
I have nothing.
Tony?
Um, nothing.
Tony has nothing, and Hal has nothing.
Yeah, uh, Hal has nothing, and Tony has nothing, uh, you just told her that, didn't you?
I'll give her the point though.
I'm sorry, Brandy's giving the point by point. Uh, Kenny, it's up to you now, we're round to you.
I have somebody for that to be the noise ordinance and a real problem with loud trucks, and I have been everything that too.
Okay. Do we have a noise ordinance?
I thought so.
I don't know, I'll mention it to the police department, is there a particular part of town that they're concerned about?
Well, the places I'm concerned about are in the business district.
Okay, what kind of trucks are we talking, we talking about what I used to refer to as soup cup trucks? Or we talking about business trucks, or what are they?
No, no, like personally own cookup trucks that are made to be loud.
Okay.
Soup cup truck, yeah.
The what, okay?
The soup cup truck.
Soup cup trucks, okay, alright, so people buy their trucks and then modify them to make noise?
And then it does a lot of noise, they're trying to get naive, and we've got people that live on the square and little kids and business people trying to have conversations, it's suddenly loud.
Okay.
I also have a question, and I know so we're saying, we, we think it's gonna be a while for putting the new parker open, correct?
Put in the new what?
Park, the playground.
Uh, I don't know the answer to that, I, I know I'm not pushing the cause, the park is closed.
Right, and, and we, we don't have any, we're not doing it by two weeks on the closure, or correct?
That's what I've been doing, yes.
Okay, the reason I ask is that we, in concert with most of our employees, have, every year, hosted, uh, leadership meetings when they came to our town. And they have pushed back their date, and during contact with me, about coming on the seventeenth of June. And I, or that's not supposed to, I know Lisa, I'm looking still, can't contact Liz, Carrie out only. And as much as I've gone to that program, my daughter went through the news version of that, I will not have it here.
Okay.
And we talked about, I could open early and make pizzas for them to take something else outside, spread out, and it's at the park. Honestly, I, what I hope is, you know, I couldn't get the park facility open anymore.
Uh, what we could probably do is talk to Chief Hong, and let him set up the tables over here like they used to do for the volunteer fire department, uh, fish rock, and they can spread out far enough in there and leave the doors open that, that should meet the qualifications all the time.
It's just a big group?
Yeah, it's what, about forty people?
Uh, yeah, thinking about how many seats I had to do last time here, yeah.
Yeah.
Two people inside right now, forty people.
You, I, I didn't catch the last part.
Are you talking about, I mean, two and a half size?
I'm talking about inside the bays over at the fire department, where they normally serve their fish fry. And it's set up, they've got plenty of room in there where they can spread out socially distant. Uh, and then we can leave the main doors up, uh, and you know, they won't be in that confined place.
Okay, well, then we're also interested in saving the playground, you know?
Well, if it's up, yeah, if it's up, that would be great, I didn't know they were still meeting, I, I didn't realize that.
They had, they had stopped.
Yeah.
But I think, I think she's just trying to figure out, I mean, so I'll just tell her that basically they're still up in the air.
Oh, we'll fit, y'all will do something. If they wanna come up around the seventh day of June, we'll make it happen.
Uh, uh, okay, I mean, okay, I'll tell you.
Who are you talking to, Dory? Okay, just, just tell Dory, I, I talk to them every year, so I'm familiar with that problem too. Uh, but we'll make it happen, we'll put them somewhere where they can space, space out. The problem I'm gonna have if the park is still closed is maybe why we let them go to the park and not us.
Right, and I, so I'm just, I'm surprised that you're thinking we can happen, I've been trying to say, we don't know what we're gonna be able to do because we don't know if we'll be in the middle of us, the start of the second wave or the start of the first wave here.
Well, that's true, and if that happens, all bets will be off as far as I'm concerned. But I think we can put them in over here, you know, by the seventeenth of June, at the time they're up here, it's probably gonna be hot. So I, I would think they wanna be in someplace where it's shady and I believe we, I believe Blake and him could put them in there. Uh, but we can look at, get closer, well, we don't have enough bidding for them, so probably nine to sixteen, I'll ask Blake about it. If he, if he willing to do this.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can make that happen safely, I do.
We had the ups, we had the upstairs up there that could.
Yeah. He, he said they have the upstairs over there also, that, that could be a valuable, but that's, that's more of a confined place. Uh, I, I, I think it would be better to do there. And the size, if there's forty of them, we don't have enough room down here in the park. The pavilion's not big enough to handle them, they'll have to sit low on top of each other. So I really think the physical fire, fire department's the best option, if there is an option.
Yeah, okay.
I'll ask Blake about it, he's probably listening at night anyway. Okay, what else?
Uh, my wish is on my phone and if he's, uh, blocking it out, I think that's it for now.
Okay, Ms. Christie?
I am good.
Brandon?
Well, talking about Leadership Wilson, you know, this project with that playground could be being. It's, well, we would've took us a whole lot longer to get that money if it hadn't been for Leadership Wilson. Uh, I, I spoke several years down there in Government Day at Mount Jewett. Every day for, you could make it, that I spoke and, and they've always treated us with back to kinda like the, the Joint Economic Development Board, just 'cause we're small doesn't necessarily mean we're not cared for and not, not loved and people like to see us do, do things and stuff here. Only other project that's on my mind right now, of course, it's in my backyard and, but, but really I keep sitting around in the backyard. And we do have people coming in here and asking things, and that is the Water Cemetery. Uh, I think it's the most historic place in Watertown by far. I think that, that some of them headstones down there are just unbelievable beautiful.
What are you talking about?
He's talking about the Water Cemetery, we're gonna take the phone over there too, hang on just a second. Hang on, Brandon.
I'd like to have two scoops of that banana fostered ice cream you made.
It was right there.
Uh, uh, I did, I would just like, you know, I, I had some ladies contact me when we was doing the playground project. I don't know that they're coming now because of this pandemic thing, but, uh, you know, a, a, a Eagle Scout program or some organization lines club, whatever can use my driveway, there's a rideaway that comes up through my house. Maybe we can just get up there, get some pictures taken now, what it looks like now and what it could look like two or three years from now. And, I mean, there, there is just, with fence and, I mean, it, it's just more or less, you know, backbreaking work, I mean, this needs brush, maybe the, the fence is coming down around the waters, part of the Water Cemetery. The Slave Cemetery over there is in bad shape and them stones are falling. Uh, we've got stones that have sunk into the ground graves that are sinking and, and stuff. And, uh, you know, we can never find the money or the, the, uh, historic. Maybe Historic Watertown would like to take home that historic place. Because I don't think they can find anything more historic than Mr. Waters himself.
What are you asking us?
I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing out a thought, you know, last time I thought, I'd have thought about us, about a city playground, we'll get the city playground. So maybe these three people that are watching us on Facebook, they might put that out there and we can find somebody that help us get that back up to something that we could be proud of.
Man, that originally cleaned that cemetery up about twenty years ago, Lynn and Lynn. It's been longer than that.
And, and what, and Lynn still does, Lynn still does and, and all them trees that was up there behind my house caught, caught that disease and I've had to have them down and clean and Lynn does a fine job. But there's some money that needs to be spent, we need chain link fencing done up there around the Waters Park. We need maybe some, somebody who was good with, with concrete that could maybe do a little repair job on some of them. And I bet, I, I bet there's companies, the monument companies and, and Lebanon, that if we give them a little push and publication or something notice that they would come out there and maybe work on something like that.
It'd be a good project 'cause it's a historic cemetery.
It is.
I doubt very few people here know that.
Uh, it, it is, and though I think the last person was buried was in the seventies there. And so, I mean, and that was tragic.
Yeah.
There's no family died in a week, so you talk about pandemic.
Alright.
That's all I can say, I don't wanna hit on that, but I'm excited about the playground, I'm excited about all the good things coming. And, uh, I'm ready to go home.
Alright, uh, when it comes up on the meeting, I'll ask you to do another motion to recess if you would. And, uh, then we'll recess to the call, uh, if it's necessary, so, if someone will make that motion.
Do you really, I mean, uh.
I, I'll make that motion.
We're fixing to recess, are you at work?
She, you just made a motion again. She's done a motion to recess.
We made, well, we made a motion here to recess.
Yeah.
We got a second?
Yeah, we got a second, oh, I'm trying to tell y'all.
Alright. What, what happened is your deal, I always order banana fostered.